Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22, 2024 North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Bible.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Siddiq.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes, so could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Thanks for all those questions that you guys asked in advance. Are there any others to pull out separate and talk about? Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Item five is our public comment time, and this is reserved for moments whenever anyone has something to share with the council that's not already on our agenda and has a public item comment period attached to it. I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Smith for a moment, please.
Mayor, I appreciate the flexibility tonight in your agenda in honoring my request. Just two weeks ago, after our council meeting, I was driving home and noticed a large contingent of emergency vehicles in my neighborhood. Not a lot going on outside, so just assumed it was a medical, not my business, and went home. Little did I know that a number of the first responders that are in our audience tonight were doing CPR on one of my neighbors. And it's very fortunate that the Connor family is able to join us tonight, just two weeks after that event. So just want to point out, members from North Liberty Fire Department that are here, Johnson County ambulance representatives, and not with us tonight are North Liberty Police officers that were part of that due to a scheduling conflict. So we appreciate you guys being here and having the ability to hear some words from the Connor family. So I would invite Terry and Ron to the podium for some comments. Thank you.
Well, I've had several people come in and say, the last time I saw you was not, you weren't standing up. I was laying down on the ground, dead. You know, it's a miracle that we have such a great first responders, ambulance crew, everybody. All I heard, because I didn't know thing, because I was out, was that people came in, they did their jobs, they didn't even have to talk, they each knew what they had to do, and they all did it. And I woke up the next day in the hospital with a tube down my throat, and I go, where in the hell am I? And I was, I couldn't talk, I had just gloves on me, so I couldn't do anything. They finally calmed me down a little bit, because I couldn't figure what was going on. But here I am, I'm still talking to you. This is my wife, Terry. She had to be there to call 911, do what we needed to do, and I'm very pleased with it.
We're just so appreciative. It was kind of a blur that night. I just love it. Everything that everyone did was just amazing, really, you know? Just amazing. And we would just like to offer our support, not only tonight, but we would like to, you know, be a part, we talked to Fiona a little bit, be a part of any publicity fundraising, any efforts to, you know, in North Liberty, Johnson County, to support this. I have a good friend who works with Fiona, and she also has been involved with the fire department, advocating for decelerators, you know, and she's worked across the country. So I would like to give a donation to the fire department. And to be honest, this is how uneducated probably most people are. I didn't really know who all was involved. So we definitely want to, you know, support the Johnson County ambulance services too. So I learned a lot that night, but mostly just what a wonderful community we live in. So thank you to everyone.
I also have one other thing. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus, and I've been a district deputy for the Iowa City Area now, another area that I'm working with. The Knights of Columbus have made, have a fact or a reading, should be here tomorrow, we hope to get them a prayer night, to give to the fire department to put up in recognition of your base service. Firehouse, hopefully you can find a place to put it. You know, we appreciate it. I know I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and for coming in and recognizing our folks here. We don't always see the amazing work they do, so this is a great reminder of that.
That's what my friend said, because I said, when can you do the thank? She said, go and let them see that you survived.
Yeah. No better gift than that. Thank you. Sounds good.
Yeah. You can. Just for a minute.
Chief, you're welcome to go out for just a moment if you wouldn't mind. Just pay attention in here if you wouldn't mind. Go watch. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Any other members of the public wishing to make comment? All right. Josiah, I'm going to turn it over to you. Item six is our engineer's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a whole lot to report. We have a couple of projects under design, including the North Liberty Road Trail. I think last time we had sent that to the DOT. We just got review comments today, so we're proceeding with getting that ready next month for bidding through the DOT. Freedom Park Trail, we had our 50% review meeting with staff and went well. Again, that's another project that we're planning for bidding this winter. Still on track with that one. We had a 50% review on the North Liberty Community Center parking lot, phase one, with city staff. Had a good meeting, good back and forth. We'll be incorporating some of those ideas and also looking at some options for trail connections and sidewalk connections and see if it can fit it in. So that when we start doing these phase projects, we just make sure we have a big-picture view of everything we want to do in each phase. So again, that one's on track, and a lot of the construction projects are still sort of in substantial completion and waiting for closeout. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Josiah? Yes, sir.
Any update on the Centennial?
I didn't. A lot of the stuff that they were working on, sort of the underground, the foundations, the footings, all that stuff is carrying through still, so that'll take a few weeks.
How soon do you expect to see the steel onto the ground?
That was November, next month was the plan for that.
Any other questions for Josiah? Seeing that I'm trying to drag this out as long as I can. You have anything else to talk about?
I would just say.
Actually, I'll make the next agenda item.
Okay.
Yours.
Okay.
I'll talk slowly. Item seven is city administrator report. Ryan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just add to Josiah's comments that I was out there, I think it was last week, at Centennial Park, and it's pretty impressive what's coming along so far. Obviously, you can't see much with the fences around, but Larson's been great to work with. They helped us plan around the Nightmare on Ale Street, and so it's really been a good working relationship so far. And I know it's early in the project, but hopefully that will continue. And I'm delaying a little bit because I just wanted to recognize our chief this evening, our fire chief. Earlier today, Chief Platts was presented with the Roger Moody Award, which is presented by the Iowa Fire Chiefs Association. And I'm told this is a very big deal, and it recognizes the exceptional contribution and advancement in the fire service. And the fire chief from Harlan drove all the way over here today to present him this award, and it was somewhat of a last-minute deal, but we were able to get Brian's parents there, his wife and both his children there. So it was neat, and of course, as you, no surprise to you, Brian was very humbled by the award. And we're fortunate to have Brian here as our chief. Obviously, we have, as I've mentioned before, have a great team of people here, and this is one example of how our folks not only contribute to the community, but in this case, to the fire service statewide. So congratulations, chief. Good work.
You're now free to go officially. You're off duty, chief. Thank you. It has been.
It's been awesome. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I just really, one, you're going to like this. After the presentation this morning, went back home with my parents being in town, and I found out my dad got the same award back in 2001. So I had no idea. So he shared that with me when I walked in the house.
Very cool.
Means even more. So, yeah. Thanks so much for, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thanks, chief. Item eight is mayor's report, and I have just a couple of items that I've been a part of recently as mayor. Yesterday, there were a few of us. Brian, Eric, and Paul joined me at the Joint Entities Meeting. It was set to be a brief one. It lasted longer than we thought it would, but we had a couple of presentations. One of them was on a program that we'll hear more about. I think some of you may already, the Wage Enhancement Program that was rolled out by the Greater Iowa City Area last year. They brought in a review of that program and what they hope to do in the future. So Katie Gerlach will be joining us in the next several meetings to give us an overview, similar presentation, but also a request of the community, not necessarily of any of us here in our budgets. And the other thing we talked about yesterday was, actually, through the Johnson County Ambulance Service, Fiona presented on an app they have called Pulse Point. It's kind of a community effort. It's an app that you can download through the Google Store or your other app stores. And Pulse Point allows folks to understand or know when an AED is needed and where they're located throughout the community, and that's been her push, is to get those in our community and make sure people know that they're there. So if you haven't already, I'd encourage you to download Pulse Point onto your phone so that you can receive those notifications as well. And the other item was that this afternoon, I was invited to participate in the Iowa Nonprofit Summit's annual meeting and be a part of a panel discussion of elected officials and how we interact, benefit from Plan Four, and include nonprofits in our community. And had a great turnout, people in the audience doing amazing things, and it was just an honor to be able to be a part of that and to help them understand how we think about them on a daily basis, on a monthly basis, on an annual basis, on the work that they do in our communities. Item nine now is council reports. Anyone have items to share with the public on things that you've been doing on behalf of the city in the last couple of weeks? Yes, sir.
So I was at the Joint Entities Meeting as well, and I would really like to encourage people to learn how to do CPR. It's a lot easier than it used to be, and it really makes a difference for folks. Even, you know, if the fire department is in the fire trucks waiting for something to happen at my house, it would still take them five minutes to get there. So that's, you know, that time is very important. So if you can help somebody and tell the fire department or the police department get there, very much, very helpful, and that increases your risk or odds of survival significantly for individuals. I participated in the scouting for food program over the last couple of weekends, and we were actually more in Corville, but the North Liberty pantry, I think the scouts picked up 3,500 pounds of food. My goodness. So. Wow, that's tremendous. So appreciate everybody supporting that program.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I attended the Think Iowa City Board of Directors meeting. Just a couple of things to pass along from there. The closeout on parade, majority of those statues have sold, and the proceeds around, totaling around $90,000 have been split. Some money going to Sol and some to CCA, and then a significant amount of that going to Iowa City Community School District to help fund art and music programming. And then, again, as we near election time, you'll see the Johnson County Conservation Bond on your ballot, and through Think Iowa City and our board, we are endorsing that and asking folks to vote yes to extend that bond to allow more expenditures for conserving our outdoor spaces here in Johnson County.
I forget to remind you guys, thanks for those reports on the boards that you're serving on for us. I appreciate that. Anyone else?
Well, so Saturday was Nightmare on Ale Street, already mentioned. It was a good event, thanks to the community relations staff for putting that together at Centennial Park to raise money for Centennial Park. And then I was at the Joint Entities Meeting yesterday as well. And then this afternoon, I sat down with some folks from Think Iowa, from Greater I.C. and Traverro, the owner of the Crandic Railline, to talk about Papa Metro a little bit. So that is still being batted around, and we expect to have the MPO's Bus Rapid Transit study should be done Friday. We'll have that hopefully, and then we'll be looking probably at options from there.
I would mention the same, the Joint Entities Meeting, and one statistic that stood out from that to me was the, almost 70% of the time that they arrived for a cardiac emergency, it was bystanders were already administering CPR, almost 70% of the time, which I just think is amazing. And I would just remind, you know, the public that, you know, you're covered under the Good Samaritan law if you're helping your neighbor in that regard. I think there's some stigma there where if you do CPR and you, you know, maybe break a rib, that at some point someone got sued for that, you're covered under that. So feel free to help your neighbors. And I will be attending the Iowa Mayor's Association Emergency Management Seminar on November 1st, so hopefully, you know, bring back some good information. And then early voting is next weekend at the North Liberty Library. So that starts November 1st, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00, and November 2nd, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00. So if you want to get out and vote early, do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, and just for me, just with the timing of the upcoming council meetings, I wanted to remind folks to vote and then take an opportunity to congratulate all the fall activities with the high school, both at Liberty and Clear Creek and Manah. We won't have an opportunity between now and when some of them finish up to, all those kids work really hard, their coaches, their parents. It's great to be a part of this community, whether at Liberty or Clear Creek. With Eric, I attended the Nightmare on Ale Street on Saturday, and just an incredible event all around, but I just wanted to comment that the events that happen in North Liberty are for all ages, right? And this was an example of one that was adult, adult, or 21 or over was for the Nightmare on Ale Street, but whether they're kids or adults or seniors, if you're interested in seeing more events like that, please, or if you have feedback on council issues, share that with us, share that with our staff. That's how those things continue to grow and evolve, and we take opinions and that information very seriously. And so I just encourage folks to continue to reach out, let us know what you're interested in, let us know what your opinion is on a topic, either at council or if it's an event that you want to see happen within North Liberty, because that's how we continue to grow as a, as a community. So.
Great reminder. Thank you. All right. Item 10, our immigrant welcome network of Johnson County. Now, welcome Mazaher Salih to the podium and help us understand.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff for giving this opportunity to us to do it, give you some presentation about what we do. My name is Mazaher Salih, as you stated. I'm the executive director of the Immigrant Welcome Network.
My name is Samantha Fitzpatrick. I have been interning with the Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County, starting in this fall, and it has been a great experience so far, so.
My name's Aldair Sully Sanchez, and I'm also an intern at the Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County, and it's been, like Sam said, a good experience so far.
We have PowerPoint, I think, or slide.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah, it's here.
We can escape out of mine, yeah. Let's see here. I might need to go get the people who really know what's going on.
It's inside of the packet also, unless the, it's right, I think that's up there, isn't it?
Is that yours?
The packet's there.
That one's mine. Okay.
Up there towards the top left.
No, it's already downloaded.
Is it this guy?
You'll get it back.
That one's mine. There we go. Good job.
Go to View.
Do what?
View, up at the top left, the View dropdown.
You know.
It's always the best policy.
You can go to like full screen mode. Full screen mode. I'll download it, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, yeah. Have you go back and forth from here, right? Yes. Okay. Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County, we found last year by, we found on 2023, exactly February of 2023, by a group of people who are really passionate about helping immigrant refugees in the community. Actually, what happened is I was executive director of the Center for Worker Justice, I came here many times with that role before, but during my service with the Center for Worker Justice, we've been seeing a lot of people who, when they come new to the community, they just like become homeless in seven days, because they come from there with like minimum amount of money, $1,000, even though they thinks $1,000 is really a lot of money because of the seeking, they, that they seeking the money from their country, and they came here, they stayed in the hotel, and suddenly we find some community member, they bring them to the Center for Worker Justice and say, this is, you know, family in the street, they don't know anything, they spent all their money in the hotel, and now they are homeless. Even though we have great resources in this community in Johnson County, but not necessarily those people know about it. So we normally take those people, we're trying to figure out a family that they can stay with, we call the shelter house, and you know that for family, the need is great. That's why shelter house is really busy also, they don't have any space for a family anymore, and we will try to figure out who can house that family temporary until we help them out. I was really seeking to add this mission to the Center for Worker Justice, so we can create a justice house for immigrants who come, but you know, I think our board of directors over there, they think that is like too proud of a mission if we add like housing people. So after I get off from the Center for Worker Justice, I still was helping people. We helped like, just getting community member on myself, we helped 18 families resettle here in Johnson County. So we just said, okay, this is really needed. We need those people, we need to be that middle people, we can house people temporary until we like help them resettle. Those people cannot find job tomorrow because they don't have a social security number yet. So we need to connect them with the social security, we need to connect them with resources, register their kids to the school, and do all that. So that's how we found this organization, and you know, our mission is just to help people resettle and connect them with different resources in the community.
Like Mazaher was saying, like our mission is, we mainly provide temporary shelter. We, or we are like the main point of contact between immigrant families and community resources, so that's what we do, and we also do a lot of advocacy in behalf of them. You know, we call up school boards, we come to places like this to advocate for these families, and we want to just prevent homelessness and empower these families so they can, you know, set their foundation in Johnson County, in North Liberty, in Iowa City, in all these places, and you know, have a successful, successful future here in Iowa.
So I'm sure you're wondering what that actually looks like. So we have a list of some of our current services that we offer. Our main thing that we do is provide a welcome house. It's currently in Iowa City, where we accept new immigrant families and help aid some of the financial burden that comes with just providing shelter and food and just generally caring for your family. We should help them with that so they can focus on things like learning how to speak English through some of the ESL programs we help provide, or take some of our job readiness courses, which moves into the employment assistance that we offer. We work right with these families, both residing in the welcome house and just immigrants from the community. We help them through the application process, through the interviewing process, and even once hired, we can help them through training with interpreters and translators as needed. But ultimately, our goal isn't for them to stay in the welcome house forever. It's a temporary housing. So another major part of our program is permanent housing support. So we aid them in that process as well, docking, going through the many application processes towards finding affordable housing in secure areas, which as a new member of the community can be especially difficult as you're not familiar with this culture and all of the logistical processes that go into something that seems so simple as finding a home.
So like the welcome house, we found the welcome house last year. It was September of last year. We rented our first welcome house in Prairie De Sheen by the North Del Chivee, and where that house is like four bedroom, a single house, is really big, like not all the houses have really huge big rooms. So that house can fit three family, which is medium size, and two large family, which upstairs and downstairs. And of course, if we have small families, it will be more than that. But the must we put on there was like three families to be sitting on the house. Though when they come, they stay there, they don't pay any rent, and you know, we find out they are, that the immigrant communities are really unique. They have new needs, like they don't speak the language. We have our board of directors, most of them are immigrants, like 60% of the board of directors have to be by the law immigrants who speak different language, and you know, and also like the staff, we have many people who speak different languages, so they help them. And as Sam said, after that, we can start researching for a job, and our goal in 45 days, they have to move to their permanent housing. Is that happening all the time? No. Sometime the social security is lit, they did not have their social security, and we don't like them to move to their own house before they get job. So that's why when you apply for like a permanent house for them or rental house for them, the first thing they ask is, if they are working, how much is their income? So we have to secure that, and we're going to talk later how we secure those two for them.
Other services we provide are, you know, community resource connections. We connect people with like healthcare and education, like Ma said. We enroll children in schools, we social security, we enroll them in healthcare, like Medicaid. And then we have advocacy initiatives, just to, like this, just trying to get the word out there that these services are available, and we're here for the community and to support these immigrant families.
So moving onward are some of our goals for our organization that are currently in the works, is establishing both an employer network and a landlord network, which are relatively similar concepts. We just want to have an established collection of employers and landlords who we can consistently go to to help these immigrant families. So for example, they would, we would have some employer, and they would reach out to us when they have new job openings that primarily are possible with limited English fluency. And for the landlord network, we just want to have secure, secure and well-known people that we are comfortable transitioning, are the people we service into their own established lives.
Yes, you know, some of the challenges that they face us, you know, we creating those two networks. We now, we have, we keep adding employer who are like really willing to hire people with less English or no English at all. So, and we adding to the list, right now we have alone five employer who really open, and whenever they have position, they send it to us, and we go there. What we provide, we provide like mentoring. So we tell the employer, So, we tell the employer during the like orientation, we will be there translated for them at the orientations. And also, we pair somebody, like for example, somebody who came and we find a job for them at the hotel. They doing, they just washing clothes, laundry. So, we will go there with them, doing the orientations, and stay for at least three-fourth hour with them doing that job in their language. So, at the end of the day, you're talking to that machine all day long. So, as long as you know what to do and somebody like with your language, like just translate and show you how to do things. And now we have that person since last year working there successfully, so because we show them what to do. The only thing that we teach them in English and they have to learn it is like exit when fire happen. Like the elevator, they exit, you cannot use elevator, you have to go there. Thus, we try to really teach them how to do it in English because they can receive that instruction in English. And for the landlord network, yeah, we have many staff to find a landlord who want to really rent for somebody who have new credit and also no renter history at all. So, and you have to pay double deposit. And they don't, when they come, they don't have that. That's why creating this network will be important because we will work with landlord who is not going to request two months deposit because those people, they don't have credit history or renter history.
So, here's some, you know, some numbers for you guys. In 2023, we helped around 10 separate families, which were around like 35 individuals, you know, children, adults, and all that. And three total families graduated from our welcome house, which means they transitioned into permanent housing and found a permanent job.
And when we say we helped 10 family, and only three graduated from us, what that means? You know, the need is really great, some, we cannot fit everyone in our house. But there is some people will fill out our applications, so our application, always we have people on the waiting list. But where they are staying, they stay, they doubling up with somebody somewhere, so that they know. Or maybe like we have many like four or five caring community member, they said that you can use my house while, my dad's house while my dad is away, or you can use our basement, you can place people. And also like some people from their community, Sudanese person who want to help us Sudanese family, a Congolese person who want to help Congolese. So, we have those network where we place those people, there are sometimes the people will come new in that family because that's maybe their cousin or somebody from their country. So, they will double up there while we help them them. We always give them the priority to go there, take them from that person home and go take them to the social security, register kids to the school, do everything, apply for all the benefit, and do everything, and also find a job for them and graduate. That's why we will say we helped 10 families graduate either from our home, which is three of them from our welcome house, but the seven as a family last year was doubling up somewhere else.
Moving on to 2024, the numbers, as you can see, grew exponentially. We helped 21 families, nine of which coming from the welcome house, which ended up being 84 total individuals, which in just a year's time is really crazy to, to think about how, how far this organization has already expanded in existing for merely a year. And currently, we have two of these families residing in the welcome house as we speak, so.
Actually, it's three.
Oh, three, yeah.
Yes. We have three family right now is staying in our welcome house. And we are helping maybe seven family who are just doubling up somewhere.
So, North Liberty, we work around the greater Johnson County area. And North Liberty is also, you know, one of area of our focus, you know, there's, we're currently right now existing two families in North Liberty and have assisted one family previously to find permanent housing. And around 15 to 20% of all the families that come through the Immigrant Welcome Network are currently or have currently, or have previously resided in the Johnson County area. You know, residents here, they have lack of rental history, lack of credit history, there's a language, cultural barriers, there's economic challenges. They have trouble finding limited affordable housing. So, we want to really expand our operations broader, broader into North Liberty to expand, you know, housing access, educational, and occupational access. Our welcome house, our plan for the future is to establish another welcome house here in North Liberty, so we can really have, you know, the ground on community. And just so they don't have to travel, you know, farther than they need to.
Yeah, we have now our Iowa City housing, but we really would like to expand because we find out the need is really great, and we need more like houses. But our goal as organization in our strategic planning is in the next two years, we have to have another house in North Liberty and one house in, like one house in North Liberty, one house in Coroville. So, we, we have to have, like, we need to have three houses by, like, in two years. That's what we, was our goal in our strategic planning for the organization. But you know, this is not easy because it's need like funding and everything. So, we, we will do that. But if you ask me what your really like ultimate goals and dreams is to create, to have a welcome center of Johnson County for immigrants and refugees. Something like, look like a motel or hotel, where we have those suite for everyone to come and stay in it, and we have our operation in one place. So, this is a future goal and you will like likely to do. I would really would like you to, I to invite you to come and look at our welcome house, just have a side visit and come and see like what the work we do in the ground. Today, we invited a family from North Liberty who graduated from our welcome house and is staying in North Liberty to come and speak, but unfortunately, the glass, the council last minute. But we, we was trying just to show you like we work here also in North Liberty. And we, either people was in our welcome house and we find apartment for them here, or the opposite, they were, you know, doubling up with somebody in North Liberty. And we help them out, and sometime, most of them stayed in North Liberty, 15% I think stayed in North Liberty. If you have any question for us, we'll be more than happy to answer, but that's all for us today.
Funding for homes is probably going to be the, the largest ticket item that you have right now. Can you give us an example of or describe where funding has been coming from? I know that you've, you've asked from us as a city for some help over the years as well, but how has your fundraising been going and where is the money's coming from?
The first time that when in the Board of Director created, and our goal was to rent a house, right? That's our goal, to have a house. So, we sat down, all of us, and said, we have to raise before even we rent a house, we need to raise for like a fund for one year of rent, which was $30,000. And we did. We asked everyone from the Board of Director to look up seven people that they know and ask them, well, you are in your dining table, you are your spouse, just thinking about close people that they like the ideas, and they can pay $50 a month for one year, that's what we said. And every one of us, it was like amazing. Everybody find those people, and they become now sustained donor for the organization. Some of them, they just paid the $600 for the year, but some of them, they just said, okay, I'm gonna pay monthly $50. And the people who pay $600 a year, those may be, that's like very few. So, we reach out to them also and ask them all the time. But as a people who pay $30, like $50 a month, we make them like sustained donor for us, and now they keep paying. So far, really, that's what we have, and also we receive a fund from Hispanic Access Foundations. We receive fund from Johnson County Economic Development, like around $44,000. And we receive a fund from JK, Johnson County Interface Coalition, around $5,000. We receive like, I guess, $4,000, $3,000, and $2,000 from Kirch. So, those were, so far what we have, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have any questions for them? Time coming up here. I asked that last question, I'm glad you brought up that last point because this, this nonprofit summit that I was a part of today in this panel, it was encouraged that we get these requests, once a year we see them, nonprofits come, present what they do, but yet we don't hear from them until next year, or we may interact with them, maybe we're on board. So, being back out and being active in telling that story as a nonprofit to the community like you're doing tonight is really helpful for us to build this foundation, and it's also going to benefit your organization. And I would encourage other nonprofits to do the same as, as that comes up.
Thank you so much. The last thing I forget to tell you, we just have our annual gala on fundraising on the 21st of September, and we raised $16,000.
Terrific.
That's in addition to what we do. Yeah, but thank you again for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Item 11 is American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, and item A is discussion and possible action regarding the remaining unallocated ARPA funds. Ryan, I'm going to assume I turn this over to you.
Yes, thank you. Well, we are getting close to the deadline, December of 2024, of where we need to have these funds allocated. As you can see from the memo included in your packet and the chart, within that memo, we have 300, call it $312,000 remaining, just under 312 remaining. The chart in there provides, provides a snapshot of what we've funded to date. And I informed you earlier that just over a million of that went to social service type organizations or programs, and the remainder used for various projects throughout the city. Our team is recommending that we invest this remaining $312,000 into the community center. We've talked a lot recently about the age of that facility, it's 30 years old, the core of it's 30 years old. The pool aquatics part is about 20 years old. We've had significant pieces, mechanical pieces fail that we've replaced, and I think I highlighted that in here as well. The HVAC system, the outdoor, the outdoor pool heater, a number of other mechanical issues that we've had. The roof, of course, was a big one, so I'd say easily a couple million dollars in. We had Chiveh Hattery help us with a facility plan, much like we do for our water and wastewater facilities to help us plan moving forward. And also included in here was a snapshot of what the next five years would look like if we followed that plan. Obviously, it's a plan, things can change. Ideally, or what our, our initial thought was, is we could pick off the, the aquatics restrooms and locker room project with this remaining funds. It's an area that is used heavily and is in pretty poor condition. After getting some initial cost estimates back, also included in here, that's, that's not gonna be feasible. For one, the project is estimated about $900,000, and there would be some concern that we wouldn't have it done, or it would be budding up to that December 2026 date. And from what Tracy and I have heard on reporting and enforcement of that, we don't want to come close. We want to make sure this money is spent well before that date, so there are no questions asked. So, what we're proposing here is to invest this still in the community center, but a project that you may recall we invested in design for in this current fiscal year, and that is some parking lot improvements. We've broken that down into, I think, is it three or four phases? Three phases overall. The first phase is coming in right about $360,000, so we'd be real close to being able to, to pick that project off. It's certainly not the most exciting project in, in terms of, we're not gonna have brand new restrooms or, you know, new, new locker area, but it's, it's needed. And Guy and Shelley and others have been involved in that design. And it will be a significant project because, you know, the parking lot is, is failing and needs significant improvements. So, that is our recommendation. What I'm hoping tonight to have happen is we get some feedback from you and really some direction. If you don't like this idea, let us know what other ideas you might have. Again, with the understanding that the project has to be, we need to be fairly close to, you know, pull the trigger on this so we can get this money spent.
I'll kind of reserve my comments until the end. Does anybody have any thoughts or any other ideas besides what staff has come up with? Actually, I won't wait. I, I like their idea, it's money that we can allocate, and it's money we can use also towards something that's already in our plan, and in a way that will ultimately serve the community, which is what our ARPA dollars have been going to. So, with that, I'll step aside.
Mayor, I would say, yeah, the parking lots are never exciting. When we started first talking about Centennial Center and that entire project, you know, years back, looking at what the initial cost for side, you know, street sidewalk gutter, you know, all the infrastructure that had to go in was extremely expensive, and people just weren't understanding because it's all underground. You know, there's millions of dollars underground before you ever see anything pop up on top of the ground that's, that's quote usable. I have the same feeling here. My only input would be, you know, we've seen years of issues at the pool, both inside and outside. Shelley's done a really good job of managing that, you know, trying to minimize the downtime with an aging infrastructure there at the Aquatics Center. But I guess I would be more in favor of some or, or most of this money going to the swimming pool upgrades or maintenance, or the indoor pool, or something that is more usable now. I, I understand we've got to have the parking lot, but something that might put us on a cleaner path to not have the pool closed as much, to not interrupt swim lessons, because that's, fills my inbox when we don't have swim lessons. That, that would be my input.
So, and I'm, I'm fine with doing that for the community center. I do recognize that, you know, if we jump out of the, we may not be able to do some of those things in time just because they may take some time to figure out how to do it. And, and as we know, when we are ordering stuff from the pool, sometimes it takes a long time to get here. So, the, you know, the, the money would be, you know, it's today or tomorrow, one thing or the other. So, you know, I think if we have most of the design, it was 50% done, I think, on the parking lot already. About there and stuff, and maybe we can bid that here and be, get it done in the next summer, then, then we don't have to worry about things, you know, running out of time.
Ryan, has, has there been any, has there been any discussion, director, team, and, and planning five, 10-year plan on expansion? Or any issues with that where money could be spent on design of future? We have the future need study that you just explained, but expanding or anything like that, that we could do initial planning, phase work with this money more quickly?
Yeah, I think that, just to be clear, the, the plan we put together was for the current facility now, not an expansion. And I think that the, the push and pull here is we have a facility that we know we need to take care of and put money into, and so we were struggling with justifying adding new facilities while we still have some things we know we need to do. No doubt, that pool is used a lot. It's part of the reason why we have to shut it down every now and again is because it gets so cloudy in there, because there's so many people in there. One of the things we think will help offset that is the construction of the splash pad out at Centennial Park. Our hope is that that will take a little pressure off of, of the pool, especially for the little folks. One of the things we see often is daycares bringing busloads of kids in, so a lot of times those daycares may not even be from North Liberty. We're opposed to that, but that does impact the pool. So, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question very well. But we, I guess the short version is no, we haven't really looked at expansion of that existing facility other than real big picture stuff, and you know, the first question is, we have to probably build a parking ramp if we wanna add more space somewhere.
So, we allocated $400,000 to affordable housing. We know that project was So we allocated $400,000 to affordable housing. We know that project was not awarded Lytec credits. What is the status of that at this point, and is this something, I mean, I'll start there, I guess.
We probably need to reach back out to Ellen McCabe. Tracy's on the trust fund board. In our last conversation with Ellen, she was putting together some options for us. And we just, we haven't talked with her in detail. We all agree, we know the Lytec project's a goner, at least at this point. It didn't even, it scored okay, but there were so many applications in the pile. But we do think there's still an opportunity there to use that funding.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering if, because we don't have those tax credits, whether this money, the remaining $300,000 we have, could bolster some other program or something like that. That's one thought I've got. I mean, seeing the request from UAY made me think a little bit about that versus a parking lot. Those are my, my couple of thoughts, I guess. I mean, when we started talking about this, I think I said that we had the opportunity to make a big, do something important and big for our community, and I think we still need to be looking at that. If a parking lot is big and important for our community, I think that's, that's fine. But this is money that we would not have had, and those are expenses that we would have had even without this money. So I would, I would encourage us to think outside the box and what we can actually do here.
So, real quick, do you have a, do you have a suggestion? I was, I kind of caught parts of it, and then it went away. And are you okay with the parking lot because of the need to allocate and get a project done, or would you like us to reconsider something else to do with this money?
I don't have a concrete suggestion at this point. I mean, I would certainly like to talk more about UAY's request, and whether there's something we can do there. But I would like to have more information about the affordable housing stuff and see where we're going with that before we make a decision on allocating this.
I don't know how plausible that is, Ryan, or how possible that is, given the number of meetings we have left yet this year.
We can bring it back.
So the other question, I guess, maybe a technical question, because we have previously allocated that $400,000, was that allocated to a Lytec project or just to affordable housing? And is that enough to allocate it under the rules before the end of the year?
Do you recall, I don't think it was allocated just to the Lytec project.
I don't think so. It was to Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County for affordable housing, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, because she, because McCabe came with four options that I recall, and we, so multiple options on the table, but I guess I don't know how it was written up.
No, I believe it's, I mean, at the end of the day, the $400,000 for a project in North Liberty. And we knew going into the Lytec project that it was going to be competitive.
Right.
There's a chance we would get it.
It seemed like, though, that Ellen was, when she came in and presented this, it seemed like she was saying that if this doesn't work, we're going to have to do something quick to reallocate because we're going to bump up against the 2024. Or maybe she was talking about the 2026. I don't know, but.
I think that it probably would have been the 2026, because in our, and we'll double check this, but we believe that money, we've spent that money.
Okay.
Got it.
And it might be fair to answer your, or to go off of your question, to get an update from Ellen on that allocation of monies, if it needs to be changed or reworded, or, you know, what the possibilities are of actually using those dollars.
We just look at the resolution. That's an easy fix. We can find that out.
Okay, okay.
There's a lot of people doing a lot of brainstorming and thinking for ways to use this for affordable housing in North Liberty. There are a lot of really good ideas out there, but they're all still percolating.
Sure.
It would be completely feasible to have it all expended within the time period necessary in support of affordable housing. It's just figuring out which option makes the most sense.
But we can, we can ask.
Yeah, do I, do I understand correctly, we need to have a decision by the end of this fiscal year, this calendar year, this calendar year, yes.
We need to have, we need to have the $300,000, 312 allocated.
Okay.
By the end of this year.
And what would, what would that allocation process take? Just some kind of ordinance or some kind of reading, or?
What I've just read is under contract. And so we have, right now, a design contract with Shive Hattery for the, for the parking lot, as an example. We would certainly have that under contract.
Under contract by the end of the year. So then, would it be realistic or feasible? Our next meeting, if I understand correctly, is November 12th.
Yes.
Would it be realistic or feasible to have a couple of options to choose from and review from a discussion standpoint by that time? Because I, like you said, something that's impactful, and, but also the need for infrastructure is always going to be there. So would that be a possibility for this group to discuss, and then have some conversations between now and then on, hey, these are the, these are the options that exist, and we need to make a decision on the 12th? Or is that not something to explore?
No, I think, I think we could have this conversation again on the 12th, but we would just need to have an understanding well before that of what options you want to consider so that we can.
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm getting to. So I've heard a couple of different options thrown out there, but I'm not clear on which ones exist. The one in front of us right now is the parking lot.
And when it comes down to it, we have three meetings left after this, so there's those two in November and one in December. The list that's in our packet on page 36 are places where we've allocated these for. Some of them are not, like, immediately impactful. Stormwater GIS?
No, I get it.
And so this is just another example of monies that were provided to communities across the country to do good for their communities that might have a really direct impact, like the pantry, or might lessen the tax burden or revenue burden, such as the GIS system. And I think the parking lot, as it's been studied and examined by city staff and their recommendation, is one that will lessen the burden on the budget. And as Counselor Smith said a moment ago, it's not anything really fun, but neither are GIS systems. But this will have an impact in our budget, and it will have an indirect impact on the tax rate.
Yeah.
And what we deliver. And it also happens to be one that we can get under contract and get knocked out in the next two years.
I'm not opposed. I just wanted to know.
No, I wasn't directing that just at you.
Yeah, what the options were.
Yeah. So with that, I mean, if there are other ideas, UAY is a valid enough idea, we may not be able to solve all of their problem by ourselves. And so if it's 5,000 or 10,000 or 20,000, it's not going to be $300,000.
My aside is, you know, if we're spending this money on something we need to get done today, that we can get the work, you know, the planning and stuff done, and then get the project set, it just frees up that amount of money for something else.
Future, yeah, that's right.
And stuff, which then we're not in a crunch, and if something else is popping up, you know, we may be able to do something with that. So.
Timeline wise, though, we have everything we need if we were to consider other options to be able to pull the trigger on this before the deadline, because we have all the plans that we need.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable. If we decide before, let's just say at the next one or two meetings, that this is our project, yes, I would feel good that we have met that intent, because we're under contract with design. We would have a bid date set for winter and get this project done in, you know, next year, well before the expenses have to be made.
So, just a technical question again, I apologize. So the actual project would not be under contract before the end of this year? It's just the design?
Right.
Okay.
And then, but then knowing that we're going out for bid in January, we would then obviously have a contract in February, March.
Right, okay. And that's sufficient?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I, to me, the parking lot feels, it feels like something that, if we're not able to come to consensus on something else, is there for us to go. I guess I would like to see additional conversations. And I know that we're being vague, and staff's looking for concrete due to time constraints. Maybe it's, you know, this week and a homework assignment from Ryan to us on those ideas that we want to see to be brought to discussion. I'm just, I would like to see other things entertained, other ideas entertained, and use that parking lot as a, you know, as a backup at the end if, if we're not able to find consensus on something else that's, to Eric's point, more impactful, short, long term for the community. That's my take.
What do you guys think?
So I'm, I think that you're just kicking the can down the road a little bit. So I think if we're just going to do something, let's do something. And then if something else comes up, and somebody says, hey, we need to do something about this, we need to look at that, and just figure out how to do that as well, if it's something that really needs to be done. So.
Forgive me, but the $400,000 that Eric was talking about could potentially come back to us to spend on another?
We've contributed that to the Johnson County Housing Trust Fund. So they'll be coming back to us with ideas on how to spend that. Our initial plan was through leveraging another larger grant with that, or tax credit with that $400,000. That didn't come through. And we knew that it may not come through, and so now we're trying to look at what Plan B could be. So the $400,000 isn't going to come back to us. It's going to be spent by the trust fund on a North Liberty project somewhere.
So it will be coming back to North Liberty?
Coming back to North Liberty, but not in, not to, we, the $400,000, yes.
Right, not to reallocate.
I would, I would be inclined to go with the city's recommendation for the $300,000 for the parking lot. And I think that's a, you know, a con, lack of a better word, a concrete, you know, asset expenditure that we're going to need to do eventually. And it's already in motion. And so that's kind of how I feel about it.
My, my opinion is, is one that we've got a plan in place, and there's nothing, no hurt in additional discussion, or at least review of option. Now, whether we have a concrete option to compare against or not, that sounds like it's up to this group to decide. And having something in place by the 12th fits the timeline that is, that Ryan's comfortable with. I don't see any reason not to at least explore, if there's a concrete option to compare against. But Brian, to your point, yes, it could potentially feel like kicking a cannon in the rug. We're going to have this expenditure at some point. Acknowledge that, understand that. But there's nothing, I don't see any reason in not saying, hey, you know what, let's make sure we're doing the right thing on this, on this significant amount of money.
So I guess I would just, we talk about it at the next council meeting, and if people have a better plan, they need to let the staff know.
Real quick, I'm going to go back to Eric. Are you, you prefer to wait until the 12th to finalize this as well?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, okay. Anything else that you need from counsel?
Well, we know we're gonna, I'm going to visit with the Housing Trust Fund. Are there other ideas you're wanting us to look at here?
Well, the only other one that I mentioned at this point was UAY, and I think, I think that's something that we should consider. At least some, we know what, we know what other communities have pledged, or at least Iowa City has pledged, and I think we could, we could do something for them.
Brian, I'm not on a concrete alternative yet, and it's my lack of familiarity with what can be included in that. So I will commit to you to have, if I have an idea, to have an idea to you by the end of the week. And if not, then, then explore the parking and UAY and the other options that have been presented. So I'll do some research on my end and have something to you, if there is an idea by the end of the week.
Mayor and Ryan, I would, I would just ask, you know, of Shelley and her team, if, if she has, I like the idea of the money being allocated to the, to the rec center. It, it reaches so many and serves so many in our community. So I like that, that focus is at the rec center. What other options are there that could be funded within the timeframe and time constraints that staff gives you? I don't know that many directors get that opportunity. So if there are things for the swimming pool, if there are things, you know, other upgrades or things to be done in the rec center that could be done within the time constraints of the management team at that $312,000, that's what I would like to see from you, and giving you that opportunity.
We'll put a list together.
So driving towards the end of the week, I think you guys probably have a pretty good list already put together at the rec center. Ryan, on the end, has suggested he'd have his ideas by the end of this week. Would others be comfortable doing that, providing some guidance, giving staff an opportunity to work on this before next council meeting? Having ideas to them, if you have some, by the end of the week?
Yeah.
Okay. Head nods. Okay. You good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, guys, very much. Item 12 is Hodge Construction Company rezoning, and item A is public hearing regarding proposed rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment from the public regarding this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing time. And Russ, item B is staff and planning commission recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a request from RM21 to C3, which is our higher intensity commercial districts, 5.12 acres. You can see the property area with the boundary high of the request, northeast corner of Bernardi Drive and Ferengine Road. This request, and here's a concept only, we would go through preliminary site plan and those types of things, but the request is facilitate a higher density residential multifamily project, although zoning would permit commercial units as well. Concept shows 234 units on, on the C3 portion, and the red line indicates where the boundary of the zoning request would be. The northern part would still remain RM21. So that 234 units would equate to 45.61 units to the acre. The, the north of the red line would be eight units, as they showed on the concept plan, 6.72 acres, for an overall density of 38.29 acres. We get that there's a bit of a sticker shock with that kind of density sometimes in North Liberty. It's on the higher end of what we would see. But I think you'll hear me say a couple times tonight that density and intensity in the right locations in North Liberty. Here's the existing zoning map. Shows property to the west, property to the east. Hodge owns all of these properties. Hodge Construction Companies all zoned RM21, which is our highest density residential zoning that we have. And on the right is the future land use map, which designates the property urban high intensity. And, let's see, we had a virtual Good Neighbor meeting on September 17th, outside of city staff and the applicant. Couple people attended, didn't have any questions at the meeting. I think they were just there to listen and be informed of what the project concept was. I included in the background material some information that, an email correspondence I had with a resident of Creekside to the north, just a little bit back and forth about some questions. They had, there was some concern about potentially, I think a gas station was referenced, so I'll just lump that into, you know, a concern about potential development, a commercial development in that area. They are, they are outside the, if we were to consider a protest, they are well outside the 200-foot notification radius. So a simple majority is all that's needed tonight. Just some of the real estate trends that we're seeing, we're seeing more requests for smaller lots. Since I've been here, we've seen more RS9, which is our smallest residential zoning for single family. And we're also seeing a lot more requests for higher density duty construction costs. We're seeing a lot more two-family homes, a lot of townhouse developments. Overall, the kind of trend is, is for things to be shrinking, shrinking. And in respect to multifamily zoning, higher units, just because of And in respect to multifamily zoning, higher units just because of those construction costs. And again, we'll advocate for higher intensity density in those right locations. Here's just an example, and I, I put this out there just to kind of give an idea of potentially what the scale of a building might, might look like. This is kind of what we'd call podium building. It's, it's concrete construction, and you have four, four stories of stick above. Hodge Construction Company built this down at the Iowa River Landing, so I asked them, you know, is this something similar that would be representative that we could show? And they said, yes. That's generally about the most intense that we're gonna see, just because that's what construction standards tend to be. You know, you're, we won't, I never say never, but it's, it's unlikely currently that you're gonna start seeing six, seven-story buildings. It's likely what we call podium building, which is concrete construction. Maybe there's commercial on that first floor, and then, and then four floors of stick construction is generally what we would see. Not entirely out of character with the other developments. I mentioned higher intensity developments. This is the Emery at North Liberty. This is 350 units. They're getting ready to begin construction on that second phase. Lease-ups are going really great. This is just four stories of stick frame without that, that first floor of concrete, and that's just exterior parking. And then, of course, this is the Penn Street Place. This was another larger multifamily development. This is 52 units, and again, four stories of stick. So, it's really not out of character, I would think, of, of anything that's been built. And again, we advocated that, that it made sense for this type of development in this location, just because of the availability of all these things around. When we look at rezoning requests, this is in the zoning ordinance, provides guidance for decision-makers of, of, does it achieve consistency with approval standards? So, we'll kind of spend a little bit of time talking about that. Again, the comprehensive plan, it's urban high intensity, and I just, you know, I think that is a big deal, and I want to talk a little bit about why we, we, when we were during the adoption of the plan, it was designated urban high intensity. This is in the comprehensive plan, but it talks about urban high intensity is, is generally 14 units or higher. In the C3 district, there is no cap on density, so it would be a high, high-density residential Location, it's adjacent to an arterial road, Forever Green Road. Eventually, as, as we're planning right now, working for Forever Green to ultimately extend out to North Liberty Road and eventually to Dubuque Street. So, this'll, so access to this road is, is going to increase when that, that's, this is a, this is a major road between two communities. And we kind of looked at those things when we consider, you know, is this the right, does this make sense for this type of development? This is our trails map. Obviously, we have North Liberty Road, trail that runs along the, the railroad and the muddy creek. This is a regional trail that goes all the way down to Corleville in Iowa City. Obviously, you have the trail network along Forever Green Road. We're missing some gaps, but those, we're planning on filling in those gaps. Forever Green Road extends, is already planned to have a trail, so you really have trail access right next to this street, this development as well. And now, we talk about a little bit of compatibility with zoning and the established character of the area. Again, the Hodge Construction to the west, 92 units on 4.71 acres, just under 20 units to the acre. Again, they, they are the developer and owner to that property to the west and to the east, so there's no concern from them as if this is incompatible with their development or the surrounding area. We have the jurisdictional line along Forever Green Road, so Corleville is on the south side. You see commercial zoning and development on the south side of the road. So, commercial development and zoning is not out of character with this area. It's been kind of a, called a different things, but a newer trend is this 15-minute city concept for urban development. And, and sometimes these things get, I think, used the wrong way. But really, it just means that you want to try and promote development that is walkable, bikeable, or you could take transit. I mean, when you start to look at this area, so what I did is, is I put a half-mile radius centered on Forever Green Road and Rancho Way, and so that boundary is a half-mile in each direction, assuming the rep person walks three miles an hour, 15 minutes, that gets you three-quarters of, three-quarters of a mile. So, you know, you start thinking about the things that are in this area. You've got schools, you've got trails, you've got a grocery store, you've got a major hospital. I continue to advocate that the property across from the hospital is one of our biggest opportunity sites in the city, where, again, more intensity and density would make sense. Not everywhere in North Liberty, I get that, but certain areas, certainly. I think traffic is always something that people bring up. A mid-rise multifamily is, is, we do these things of number of units, average car vehicle trips per day. It is 5.44, recognizing that smaller number of people live in households, or they might walk or bike. So, that's 5.44 vehicle trips per day, equates to a little over 1,200 vehicle trips. Right now, the 2022 DOT traffic counts on Forever Green Road, you could see it up there near the roundabout, is 6,700. The max capacity roadway, 16,000, so we're well under adding this traffic to Forever Green Road, although I get it during peak times can be a little intense, but it's well within the capacity of that roadway. Talked to our friends over in Corleville. I think we look at probably Forever Green and Front Street being like a Penn and Front Street situation. It's kind of funky with that stop sign there. You know, I reached out to them and said, hey, you know, what are your thoughts on, on future plans for that intersection? This section of Forever Green Road is, is Corleville's to maintain. Scott Larson, the city engineer over at Corleville, indicated that it would be their long-term vision to put a roundabout there, and he kind of showed hypothetical connections to the park. He did caution that there needs to be some property acquisitions there, but certainly something like this makes a whole heck of a lot of sense. It looks to me a lot similar to like a Penn and Front Street, and would certainly move traffic a lot better through that area. So, the planning commission considered this request. They did have the finding that it achieved consistency with the approval standards in 165.09. So, the planning commission accepted that listed finding and forwards a request to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and that vote was unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Before I move on to applicant presentation, are there any questions specifically for Russ in the work that he and, or planning the zoning committee have done?
Russ, I missed that meeting. I don't miss many of those. What were some, were there any contentions? Were there any harder questions? Was there, I know it was unanimous, but was there hesitation by any board members on, before that vote?
There wasn't. I honestly think the planning commission got the position that we had taken, that this, it makes sense in this right location. I am not one of these planners that will advocate for density or intensity everywhere in the city. I think there's perfect areas. I live in one of them that is a lower intensity subdivision. I like it a lot. But then there's other areas of the city where we have opportunities for intensity. And I failed to mention, Forever Green Road, especially as it is extended out, we don't have transit currently. You know, whether the train comes or not, we'll see. But bus service is, is areas where we want to concentrate higher in density for people have access to future transit. And so, you start to think of these lines of Forever Green Road extending out to other communities, access to Rancho Way, obviously, is going to be a transit line. So, I think the planning commission, you know, understood that we were, we were looking at this during development of the comprehensive plan, and that it achieved, you know, consistency with those policies. And I, I don't recall really a lot of pushback on, on this at all.
And not pushback, but there were some good questions just about traffic, and, and of course, Russ answered them swimmingly with some of his diagrams here. It was, I thought, good dialogue with the group.
Yeah. I was just gonna comment, I thought that the whole, all of the information presented was comprehensive, answered all my questions that came into my head when I was reviewing the information. So, nice job to you and the commission on getting it all in front of us, so that we can make the informed decision.
Thank you.
On the roadway, the maximum is 16,000, but we know and we see every day, the school is a problem.
Yes.
The, the in and out of the school is a problem. This likely increases enrollment in that school also, as the school district, I'm assuming through their comprehensive plans, follows especially high-density development in the school district. But that certainly will be something that we will have to tackle with the school district.
Yeah. And, you know, if we think about the development to the east, you know, we wanted to make sure, at least with the concept at this point, we know we're early on, but, but we were pretty adamant that we didn't want to see an access really on the concept of Forever Green Road. We, you know, we'll talk about that a bit further, because it forces all the traffic out to Bernardi, but we were really cognizant of trying, we've really, Josiah and I have been talking a lot about just really paying close attention to access management on Forever Green Road to make sure it keeps running smoothly.
And pedestrian traffic, there's a lot of kids that walk at sidewalks.
I would note, I think it'll be, you know, right now, there's so much construction still going on at the central, more central. I think that will help that area. And I remember when Garner was first constructed, Front was a mass. It still can get, I mean, it's a school, there's never gonna be a, you know, 100% fit, but it's gotten better there.
Roundabout on Front and Forever Green there, I think, is needed and will be huge for that also. The higher density in that particular, you know, location makes, as you mentioned, a lot of sense to me with the hospital being there and the grocery store and, so, not saying anything new, but, you know, I think that's a good spot for it if we're doing that.
I just want to be clear on that roundabout. That's out of our control.
I understand that, that's Corleville, but if Corleville's listening.
Just, just the one question on that. I know you mentioned long-term, excuse me, long-term vision. Is it a year? Is it five? Is it 10? What, any idea?
If I recall correctly, they submitted a warrant request to the MPO a couple of years ago, and they, and I, I don't recall that it was warranted at that time. Boy, knowing how these things go, we're probably in the five-plus range time period.
We'll have a stop sign there for four years after this is built.
Yeah. And again, it, I mean, it would be a public project, but there would be some land acquisition because there's two houses.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and keep in mind, this isn't, well, I don't mean to speak for the developer, but I assume this isn't gonna all be built at once.
No. Good point. Yes.
Russ, just, I have no problem with the residential density at all. Are there any uses in that C3 zone that would be allowed? Because, I mean, if, if we rezone this, and some, they propose something that's allowed, you know, permitted use in the C3 zone, it's problematic for us to deny that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's a, there's a whole list of commercial uses.
And, I mean, are there any, is there anything in, in that list that concerns you with this project, with this location?
Great question.
Only because, I'm gonna say no. And I, I think the email referenced a gas station, and I, I don't know, I, sometimes I go back to Davenport and think, you know, some people are fearful of, of the corner liquor store or something like that, that just, that does no good for a neighborhood. But, you know, I, I think of, of gas stations would, you know, and I, again, I kind of think about, we're on an arterial road here. It makes sense for commercial development as well as multifamily development. I, I think if there were some reservations, I think there's things you could do to, to limit the number of commercial uses in there. I think based on what they've shown here. And I don't think retail makes a lot of sense in this location, but, but who knows? Things change and, and trends change and, you know.
And I guess I'm just looking at the concept provided, and maybe, maybe it's a question for Josiah too, but access to Bernardi, or however you pronounce that, would that be limited to where current access is? I mean, could they move, I mean, we wouldn't have access directly onto Forever Green. Is that correct?
Yeah. I think we would look further at it. Our, our first reaction was no access on Forever Green Road.
Or Front Street.
Or, well, yeah. So, what we have going through here is, we've got a high-power, we have a gas main that runs along the east side of this property and the west. I think there might be the potential, I don't know if that even, if, if they would even allow an access to be combined. No, it could be possible if there was, if Mid-American allowed some type of crossing that they could line up with the driveway across where the school is. But if you see the location of where this access is, it lines up with the driveway that was built for the, the development to the west, and, and we had them pull that pretty far back north to stay away from that intersection. So, we give that enough stacking.
Restrictions on access would come, again, before this, before this body in the form of a preliminary plan and form of a developer's agreement, and that would be something that you guys would have some discretion over, once, once there's something, this, this being a concept, right?
Right.
I, I know from personal experience that developers hate being held to concepts because
Oh, sure.
That's what it's gonna be. But the, this, you guys will have a tremendous amount of say over
How?
A thing gets implemented there. But I think, Mr. City, you're right that, I mean, once you're, once you're zoned C3, outside of a conditional use, everything that's in C3 could come in, right?
Right.
And so, that's a
Can you, can the council request zoning of C3 with conditions?
Yeah. So, 414 of the Iowa code requires that the, if, if conditions are placed, that the applicant agree to those conditions before the close of the public hearing. So, we, we did chat about this internally, and please jump in any time.
How about now?
Go ahead.
So, we, we've already had our public hearing, and we've already closed our public hearing. So, if council feels that they want to impose conditions on this, you can't do it tonight. And in fact, what we, what I would recommend at this point would then be to ask that this matter be tabled, right? And so that we can, but let's have a discussion about what conditions you might want to have, and then table it for the next hearing. We would need to republish this. We have to have, we have to publish a notification in the, in the paper that we're gonna have a public hearing for people to come in and talk about it again. So, I would, I would put, this is an ordinance amendment. I would push this back to a first reading again in two weeks. That would be, if, if you have a, a condition that you'd want to put on as, as rezoning, because we only have a, that public hearing is tied to our first reading in general. So, that's, some other communities do some shenanigans about keeping a public hearing open indefinitely, which I think is baloney. So, I would, I would just table it for two weeks and come back if you have something that you want to do. Is that responsive?
Can we add public hearing to each of the second readings, or each of the following readings?
Yeah, we, we just need to publish it every time.
And would that
Oh.
Would that allow us to make any?
I, I'm not comfortable, I, I don't think, I'm reluctant to say yes on that. I think, I think going back to a, a first reading is appropriate and publishing there. I think the, if, if the council feels strongly, can always skip a third reading if, if there has not been, I think that would probably be a better way to, to do that and make sure that we are complying with the, with the law, that there's not a, there's not a clear carve out there for that. But I, I'm more of a belt and suspenders kind of guy. I like to keep us out of trouble.
And Nate's, Nate's with, Nate with Hodge is in the audience. I mean, obviously, they're not gonna be in construction this year, so I have some ideas of some limitations, right? You know, multifamily is, is what's shown, mixed-use buildings, we've identified in the code, you know, could be commercial on the first floor, residential above, perhaps office development, you know, those things, I think are probably in the spirit of, of what I think you'd be comfortable with.
Would you have to go back to P&amp;Z then?
Nope.
I guess back to my, my previous question about access, there, there's nothing that would, I'm just thinking about planning principles, rules, anything like that, that would say that an access on Bernardi would have to be a certain distance away from Forever Green.
Well, there would be, yeah. I mean, like, I think when we looked at the initial, this concept, that came up, and like we said, the concept shows this is aligned with the existing drives, but those existing drives are there because there is a distance they need to be away from Forever Green Road to stay out of that influence zone where cars are stacking, making left turns, making decisions. So, long-winded, but yes, there are, there are guidelines, principles, concepts that would inform how that should lay out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at this concept, if, if this is the access that we're looking at, I would be less concerned about high-traffic kinds of things coming in and out. I, I would expect something a little quieter, but I, I would expect something a little quieter, but I'm also not, I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant at this point.
Agreed, Mayor. Hodge has been a good partner with the city, so I'm going to reserve, I like having the options and I appreciate those options, because being so close to the school, I think we have to be mindful of possible conditions that we might want to put on there, but I'll reserve that until we hear from them.
That sounds good. Is it okay if I move on to applicant presentation then? Okay. Come on up, Nate. Item C is our applicant presentation.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Russ. I'm Nate Kading with, I manage the commercial real estate development efforts at Hodge. Thank you, Russ and Josiah. We spent a fair amount of time over the last few months just kind of going back and forth and workshopping this. We think that's typically the best approach, is to get, get this in front of city staff as soon as we can, so I appreciate your responsiveness. And John's here with MMS as well, who's helped us envision the site layout. Russ beat me to the punch on a lot of the reasons as to why we're excited about this development. You talk about the proximity to the new hospital and the grocery store and the trails, and I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to get more of the zoning, was to meet the market demand, it's a very desirable place to live, and we see it being that way for decades to come. So as developers, that's really, you know, we need to find the best and highest use for the property, and I think by getting this more density here in this particular site really allows us to do that. And then Russ also hit on the point around cost effectiveness and with increased construction costs, you really get more, you know, efficiencies of scale when you're able to get more units on a, on a site of this matter. And I think one of the points the council was talking about was around phasing, we certainly do intend to phase this project, it's probably one, one building at a time, and this would be a several-year project from beginning to end, probably starting in the rear with the townhomes and working our way forward towards Forever Green. So we're, we're really excited about the project. Again, appreciate the, the dialogue with the city over the last few months and happy to answer any questions. John, I don't know if you have anything more technical or not, but happy to answer any questions too.
Thank you guys for being here and sitting through this meeting tonight. Do you guys have any questions for the developer that haven't already been asked?
So Nate, it's conceptual, but have there been discussions of other concepts on commercial versus your residential?
We've only examined it as the multifamily up until this point, you know, we'd certainly have had some conversations just in the last few days with Russ around some of these potential, you know, restrictions on the commercial use, and that's certainly something we'd be, we'd be up for discussing as we, as we look, you know, into the next few weeks as well.
Any other questions? All right, thank you guys again. I'll move into item D, which is first consideration of ordinance number 2024-10. This is an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RM 21 multi-unit residence district to C3 higher-intensity commercial district. As a reminder, if we move on, we can't go back.
I've got a lot of questions I would move that we table.
Motion on the floor to table?
This would be to table until the next, our next meeting.
And I need to talk a little bit about our hygiene for motions. When someone motion, makes a motion, the next thing someone should say is second, probably, unless, unless you're wanting to let it die. I know that you have questions, but this is not the time.
Thank you, Eric, it's been seconded.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now it's question time.
You can table it to a, a, a date certain, our next meeting, right? Or you can table indefinitely, which kills it. So I would, I would suggest tabling it to a date certain, that would let staff republish if we want to have another public hearing, right? And, and that would allow us to have a public hearing that gets held open, we can put, we can move the order around a little bit so that we, or just don't close a public hearing until we're, until we're all done with the, the, the agenda item at the next meeting. And that would allow the imposition of, of conditions that need to be agreed to in writing by the developer before, before the close of that, that opening. I feel like I'm rambling.
You didn't agree?
I do that a lot.
Thanks for the guidance. Russ, Ryan, what kind of notice do we need in?
Well, it would be helpful to know what Councilor Wason's questions are before the next meeting or tonight, so that we can.
Can we talk about it now?
Yeah.
So a couple of things, I'm with Eric that, you know, you have a concept, and, but once you rezone it, then you're stuck. And, yeah, I, I think that this is a huge project, there's a lot of space there, or a lot of, you know, a lot of units in there, the density is, is pretty high, and I'm not sure that's the best place for it. I will disagree with that, just because of the traffic is going to be an issue, because everybody's going to go to work at seven o'clock in the morning, and, you know, you're, now you have a, people are going to have to turn left and right, and then to get around that, they're going to come back up Vandello and try and get out on Front Street. So which is, that's, that road is not designed to handle that much traffic, it's hard to get through there, anyway. So, but I would think we need to really, no, no business commercial, so it just has to be multi, the multifamily. I would actually like to see the density a little bit lower, but that's a separate issue in everything and stuff, so. And then, I don't know, the other thing, I think we missed the opportunity, and maybe we should talk about this more at some point, is, you know, somebody's, you know, bringing in, they want a 230-unit development, you know, and we didn't say anything about affordable housing requirements, that we should have maybe partnered with them a little bit about and stuff. I think that's probably a little far gone in this case and stuff, but I would like to make sure that it says that we're not going to have commercial businesses in the area, and then that it will not be an access to Forever Green Road, so.
Are you, and again, it's utility-based, are you amendable to the second access on the Front Street so that it does away with your concern on?
I think that probably works.
How so? If it lines up with the school?
Yeah, then the people are going to try and, you know, you're going to, people are going to turn it left, and then if you're turning right, you're just going around the corner, so I think it's just going to make a big mess, until at some point you had a roundabout, so, but, but that part's not even, we don't know what's going to go there, so. So it may not even be feasible, I think, to make an access there.
So I, like I said, I don't have a problem with the density residential-wise. I wouldn't have a problem with some light commercial there. My, my concern is heavier traffic, and I think the way it's laid out, probably we're not going to see a ton of that, but I, I mean, if, I would be in favor of tabling it until the next meeting to discuss those, those restrictions. And you kind of mentioned some, but I would, I would certainly take your recommendation on what restrictions or, or conditions would, would go on this zoning.
Sure. You mean from a commercial use standpoint?
Right. And access as well. My preference would be to not have access off of Forever Green.
I, I think that's probably the easiest one, to be honest with you, that's, that's an easy condition.
And I think we've had a robust discussion about this tonight, I would not have a problem with, with waiving a third reading of this ordinance if, since we're putting it off.
I'm in full agreeance with those points.
Any other, anything else you guys, I mean, I think Eric and, and now Smith seconded in this have kind of brought up the, the main concerns, I think, commercial, what's in there commercially? They, they're okay with, with, with that being located commercial, I am as well, I don't get to vote on it, but do you have anything else that you'd like for city staff to consider?
No, I would just say, you know, if we're tabling it to a certain date, that's what I heard correct, right? We've got a number of topics on our agenda already, so any, if there's communication with, with, with folks here, more visibility we have on what some of those exclusions are, gives us an opportunity to, to think about it and digest it a little bit more so we can move some things along in a more timely fashion, both for our guests and for staff and council. So some of those conversations, communications, don't wait until the, the last, you know, Friday, Monday, whatever, before the council packet, share that in advance so that we can have that visibility, I think it'd be helpful.
I'm sure Nate and I, if we don't talk tonight, we'll.
I kind of figured that was going to happen, so I'm just like, let us know what's, what's going on.
And to be honest, we've, we've already been kind of talking about those concepts in anticipation of this might be a discussion point.
Thank you. Paul, anything else to add?
Just, I think they all made good points, and do we need to amend the motion to include?
We just need to make sure we set this, we need to get a date in mind, and that's where I'm driving.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, Councilor Wason, what was your actual motion?
No, for the next meeting.
Was it, was it to?
The 12th.
To table to the next meeting, okay.
Not to, not to make it go away.
Otherwise, we could amend your motion to table it to a specific date, I was, I didn't know.
Thanks for that catch, I didn't either.
Okay.
Russ, Ryan, is that enough time?
Yeah, we have what we need.
Nate? Okay.
Otherwise, I would just reiterate that Hodge has been a great partner for the city, and I've seen the buildings they've built in the IRL, and they, they look amazing, you know, I would be, I'm okay with the, with the density there, but obviously, like everyone else, my concern is, you know, would be traffic, would be mostly the concern there, but as far as a great partner and a great, you know, visibly aesthetic, nice-looking building, I know that's, would be forthcoming, so that's all I have to say.
For table, do I need a voice vote or a roll call?
You'll need a voice vote, but I never heard several call.
Yeah, we'll take one. Tracy, are you up for it down there?
Of course.
Okay.
Haven't talked in so long, I don't know what my voice was. Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Thank you all, great discussion. Thank you guys for being here and sitting through this meeting. Item 13 is North Jones LLC rezoning, and item A is also a public hearing regarding proposed rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on this rezoning request? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item B is staff and planning commission recommendations again, Russ.
Well, the last one's brief, this one's going to take a while. Sorry, I couldn't help myself. So this is just a simple rezoning, it's zoned RM8 multifamily, and they, they're just requesting, and, and for some reason, I'm not quite sure why, you see a mix of, you see the townhouses to the north, this area is zoned RM8, and, and so what they, Watts Group came in and said, you know, we'd like to explore building, you know, another multifamily dwelling there to the, to the north side of, of that existing development. And so you can kind of see the pink areas, the RM8, it's, it's zoned, I'm sorry, designated urban high-intensity on the future land use map, which, which accommodates medium-density developments up to 14 units to the acre, so the RM12 totally fits within this area and is consistent. Did have a virtual public good neighbor meeting on the 17th, no one outside city staff or really attended, so there's, there's been no objections to this request. Again, it's a pretty straightforward development, again, the comprehensive plan supports medium-density, which the RM12 is. And again, the planning commission found that the request achieved consistency with approval standards, and they forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and that vote also was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Any questions? All right, item C is applicant presentation.
Good evening, my name's Adam Honn with Watts Group. As Russ talked there, this property is one that we've managed for a number of years. Just recently, this past year though, we did purchase it from the family that had owned that, and of course, we look at it from the developer's eye sometimes, and we look at this site and go, why wasn't there one more building on this, on this pad out here? And so we met with staff, discussed it, looked at it, and if the zoning was changed to the RM12, it allows to build one more of these buildings right there, consistent with a, an arterial road out front with driveways in the back, similar product across the street directly north beyond those three townhouses you see is, is those products, so that's why we're here tonight.
There any questions?
So what are you planning on putting there? Another like, another building like the 1695 type?
Correct, yep. That's it, it's, there's two 12s there and an 8. I'm assuming they were trying to hit the number at the time too, so we're just looking the same thing.
Just fill in that triangle.
Yep. Yep, but there's enough room there for another one of those and a similar garage.
Sounds easy enough. Thanks, Adam. Item D then is first consideration of ordinance number 2024-11, and this is an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RM8 multi-unit residence district to RM12 multi-unit residence district. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14 is North Liberty Road Trail Project, and item A is resolution number 2024-99. This is a resolution approving the temporary construction easement agreement between Scanlon Family LLC and the City of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Park. Showed what I heard, sounds good, okay. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Motion carries. And item B then is resolution number 2024-100, a resolution approving the temporary construction easement agreement between Life Church Assembly of God and the City of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Park. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 15 is our 2024 bond sale, and this is resolution number 2024-101, a resolution setting the date for sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2024A, and authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in connection therewith. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Leibold. Any questions about this? Yes, sir.
So the city address that's listed in there is the Quail Creek, do we have to, is that okay, or?
No. It's funny, I just went through that again today and missed that, I don't know if you, I missed it too.
Okay. I went through it slowly, based on what we went through a few years ago, and I still missed that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Feel free to go through, all of you go through and send anything, I found a couple of things, that one I didn't, so we'll get that changed.
Yep, so, and then, as a totally different aside, maybe Shive is doing the same thing, because there's a construction document that's got the old scene.
Oh, okay.
We're going to keep finding him for five years. We still get things to find these cherry, so.
We, just to, to your point, this, this is the preliminary official statement, so we meet next week with a financial advisor and bond counsel to review as a group one last time, to try to catch all these things. So if you are bored and want to read through it again, feel free and let us know if you find anything. Thank you.
Any other questions, observations, points, edits? All right. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Park?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 16 is CDBG CV, resolution number 2024-102, and this is a resolution approving the policies required by the Community Development Block Grant CV program for the purchase of fresh food for the North Liberty Community Pantry. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Wason, seconded by Smith. Any questions about this?
My only question is whether I have to abstain. I don't think I do, probably in this one.
I don't think you do have to abstain.
I'm in favor of all these provisions, generally so.
And as I think I noted, they're all, we've approved all these before.
Yeah, right. I don't, I don't think you have to abstain from this one.
Tracy, how about a roll call then?
Okey-dokey. Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.[1728.33]